So and you'll you can see that if we go to the science. And I'll bring it up right now, I was doing. EC through six before, but if we take a look at your science standards, you'll see that. And you've already printed these out and these aren't gonna change like they're not gonna change, they're gonna be your standard, it's like the Bible of your content area. And it's. Nicely sort of. Here. You see the. Like how it really super correlates with the teaks explicitly just you know, naming them in the overarching standard. For physical science, for life science, for air, um, earth and space science. And then like the, I love how that last one is like, and anything else that's common to sciences is like the huge umbrella of lots of things that are science. So um, that's why it's so important for you to have this document out and to sort of go through each of these and maybe on the other side of it make notes like. For seventh grade and go through and read, read this, you don't have to memorize it, nobody ever. Ever has like, I don't think I, I was a public school teacher for, you know, fifteen plus years since. Two thousand and three, and I didn't memorize my teaks, but I certainly knew how to do all the things that were there. Um, and and what's important is for you to look through here and sort of try to. In your own words, describe, okay, seventh grade, science, these are the things that they are required to do. This is what like the overarching goals are for these particular areas. And then to take a look at, okay, seventh grade and then eighth grade, what is the main difference? Like, what is the main, this is what they needed to know in order to do these specific skills in the eighth grade? And then likewise, from eighth grade to ninth grade, right? What is the difference in knowledge? And and those areas are going to be consistent throughout um, the teak, so you'll see a scientific investigation and reasoning. You have uh, matter and energy, force and motion, earth and space organisms and environment. And so here we're getting to the. Investigative reasoning, this is one of the overarching categories. And it's got a lot, there's a lot of media, and if we were to go back and look at, even though it's not part of your exam, but. If you were to go and look at sixth grade, it would, it would help you because each of the content areas, they build on each other vertically. So kindergarten, we don't start pontificating about like black holes or any of that stuff. We begin with sort of like the broader scope and we build, 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 build. And so your deep dive of the teaks should help you understand like, how are we building? Like, how are they changing and building um, as we move through the teaks? So um, again. Force and motion, like that whole physical science, that's what, what that is talking about. Um, earth and space and organisms and environment, here we have it continued. Organisms and environment, organisms and environment, and so there's a lot depending on what um. Grade level it is in those different categories that are consistent K through twelve in science. You're gonna have different, uh, it's gonna fluctuate, so there might be a whole bunch in this area for that grade level, but not so much about space. So um, going through, making yourself notes, I like to use those big note cards, those like uh. Yeah, or even just use the back, if you printed out your standards, like each have each one, like one be seventh grade science. And then just make the little categories, yeah, make the little categories and and write your notes there. You don't have to have this stuff memorized, but you do need to be able to sort of explain it in an intelligible way. That way you're able to um, respond to it in an intelligible way if you see it there on the exam. So something I might have to look up because I myself like. I like I kind of phototropism, like I wanna say I knew what that word meant once upon a time, but I'm just gonna look it up since I don't. There's no, nothing wrong with not knowing what something means, there's only um, something wrong when we know we don't know what it means. And we pretend and move on like we do, what was it photo? Here it is. So I would just write it on my um. Notes, the orientation of plant or other organisms, oh, okay, so yeah, so it's like the dancing, they're moving their faces to the light. Um, and and I've seen that even my, you've seen that yourself and the students can see it, you can even do it like in class with them and have the use of those. Um, those lights and have them altered and the plants, as you know, will change to the um, move towards or away from it. Negative photo tropism, so the opposite. So I didn't have to relearn this whole thing, I already knew what it was, all I had to do was like sweep out the neurological pathway. And now it's like good to go as far as my being able to access it later. So that's what I need for you to do as you're studying for this exam is to go through the teaks and anything that you can't like describe to someone as we just did with phototropism. Um, that you just look it up and briefly write something there because then it's going to be solidified knowledge that you can retrieve later. While you're taking the exam. Okay, so let's take a look at eighth grade really quickly and see what the major, if we can see some major differences. So you said you did the two forty? Did you do two forty?
Yeah, I'm doing two, two forty tutoring. I noticed in the email that you sent me, um, you were talking about scores, um, I haven't. Tried the exam, like I haven't tried the tested for the exam yet.
Right.
Is that what the scores are for, like that's.
Yeah, that's what I meant, because some people, um, they do have, like they have taken it before. And so um, yeah, just ignore that, you don't have scores yet and hopefully your scores won't be uh, you know, need to be analyzed for a needs assessment because you'll be successful. And honestly, Emma, you can be successful um. With this exam the first time, but you certainly are gonna have to invest a little bit of time in in reteaching and sort of like re researching some of those. Main things that we know are gonna be on the exam because um, we have our standards and they explicitly tell us. Let me go to one of those. Or. History, societal decisions, okay, we have physical science. So. Force and motion, but like these applying properties of fundamental forces. Like you're probably gonna have examples of i- in in about push and pull gravitational force. Toys on a playground or or some other such thing. And and that's the point of the way that the standards are read, on the left hand side are our knowledge. Things that we have to know, the properties of objects and materials, the concepts of force and motion. But it's not enough just for us to know the science, we need to be able to do. Particular things with the, with that knowledge and with the students. And the things that we need to do uh, or know to do are on the right hand column, that is our application of pedagogy and those science concepts with the students. So you know, your ability to select appropriate techniques and procedures in order to show them. Properties of objects and materials and concepts of force and motion, right? Um, so we're not just going to be talking about it with them, but we want for them to like do many experiments. Dealing with size, shape, temperature, magnetism, hardness, all of that stuff. And and uh, to create and select appropriate activities and and techniques for them to have experience in that. This is why I like to tell my students. To if they wanna be superstar students um, to read all the teaks K through twelve. Even though you're only tested, just so you understand like, what was the process that they were building on? And like what was, how did it go, what should they know when they come to me? At what age did they uh, you know, learn particular concepts? I find it important, especially for um. You know, math, especially for math and and reading, it's really important for them to understand like what foundational skills. And concepts were taught, um, because those are really the building blocks for some of the more complex mathematical, you know, skills that they're gonna need later on. So. Apply all skills specified for teachers EC through four using content and context appropriate for grade seven through twelve and just. Skills, um, you're having um. Activities, sorry, my dogs are whining, um. Activities that you can do with the kids um, to be able to illustrate many of these scientific concepts. Um, obviously not all, we won't be able to do all of them, you can't um. But those that we can't simulate and experiment like on a smaller scale, we can certainly like. Investigate utilizing technology to see like what, you know, to like investigate like, well, what has been done or like what sort of investigative um, research has been done in that area? Let me see. Okay, so another important thing with uh, let's go back to the science. No, Marco. So this book is not super great as far as practice questions or anything like that, it's just gonna be a a te- a review of. Science concepts. So as you're going through the teaks, if you don't wanna Google something, you think like, oh, is this what they're like, is this the level at which I teach this at at high school? You'll know because it will be in here, like here's just like the collection of all the content that you might need. Um, regarding physics, regarding chemistry, regarding, you know, cell structure and whatnot. So what whatever you don't wanna Google, I would, you know, looking through your teaks and utilizing mometrix. Because um, for sure, we know this is at the level of, you know, seven through twelve. Cause sometimes with the science, if you're just investigating concepts, you might find like really cool stuff, but it's even like more complicated to understand. Cause it's like college level, it's like, you know what I'm saying? And so this will give you a um. Appropriate lever, level of rigor, so you won't have be having to read like research papers and other such things while you're trying to to find. Some of it now, I know that um, in in past time, my student. He failed his first administration and then we worked together, he really like very strongly recommends. Watching those uh, science videos that I added, they're not my videos, like I think that they're by. Um, but he said that that was incredibly helpful for him and. And also practicing um, going through and practicing physics and chemistry stuff, like the math portion of it. Like that part was really important as well.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm worried about, um, cause everything else I think I have pretty much down like going through two forty. I'm taking, you know, like the quizzes and stuff and I'm like, yeah, okay, I just like need a refresher, I was just like, oh, yeah, I know what that is, I was like, okay, I've got his number, I remember that, I know like. The scientific processes, the data, I know all of these things and stuff like that. And then I'm like, oh, the physics and the chemistry I know are the parts that I'm gonna be like. I know what this is. I don't remember the formulas for this, you know what I mean?
Yeah, but they give you the formulas, like they will give you formulas. But I I will suggest that you, I suggest that you practice some, you know what I mean? And and go use the teaks like as your guide of what skills do I need to even practice, let's go to a um, physics type situation. Uh, we're gonna have to go to high school, but but even at the junior high, they're already starting to build like that physics, um, those foundations, that skill. In in order for them to be ready. For physics, so um. Let's see, do do do. Trying to think where. Using equations, graphical vector, distance displacement, speed, and so like velocity, speed, all that stuff. So I would certainly um, watch one of the physics like review, like a physics, a high school physics review. And there's so many really great teachers out there, like let's just, I'm just gonna Google it like high school physics. And um, I just put high physics, oh my lord. That's not what I meant, I don't want high physics, I just want high school physics, okay, so. Um, physics and like crash course and that's where crash course is was hi- what was highly recommended by some of my other um, students that did really well. Um, after having failed it the first time and we sort of investigated like, because uh. Like I said, it's not, I'm sure, not that you can't do the math, you but you certainly need to practice and sort of like sweep the neurological pathways before you get there. Because there's, there's gonna be, it's gonna be too stressful to try to recall and reteach yourself um, there. So make sure that you, like, we already know vectors is certainly gonna be something that the students, I just read it on the teak, so. Um, you know, review all of those, those main concepts. And um, just watch them work them out, do it along with them um, and and practice. And that way, on the day of the exam, I think that you'll, you won't have issues because like that's the way that it worked out for David. He went through, um, we did a deep dive, we took a look at the the teaks and analyzed them and um. The the watching of and the going through and doing like you're sort of in the class, I know it's kind of like annoying because we're adults and whatnot. But we have to, we're always learning and especially for this, it's like a muscle memory type thing, you know what I mean? So um, just getting that muscle memory back with with um, the 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 rules and the equations and um. The different way in which that we we uh, talk and measure the. Excuse me, this uh, physical forces, so um. Lots of good stuff on here, I would start with the crash course business. Because they're just more like, and it's forty six videos, holy shenankees, let me just see, like, I'm not gonna play it all, but.
Brilliant is the best place to learn science interactively, it gets you hands on.
So and they're pretty short too.
Yeah, they're pretty good videos.
Yeah, but if these aren't working out problems. Like actually a teacher trying to find out like, you know, the ma- the, you know, force at which something is falling like from the sky. And then there's resistance or whatever, like you wanna try to work some of those problems out. Um, before you get into the, into the exam, because you're right, you are gonna have more difficulty with those skill ones. Um, just because you've had less practice with it, right? And there's, there is less practice out there, like um, most of it is narrative form of of regurgitating concepts, right? Science concepts, and so what mostly gets people is the level of skill.
Um, I do have a question regarding the exam, is it, it's, I don't. Do you know like the breakdown of like how it is? Cause I know that, I know the breakdown is like, oh, it's gonna be this much, this much, this much, but I mean like. Um, is it like multiple choice versus like open ended questions and stuff like that or?
It's all going to be um, multiple choice questions, what can I? Exam. I hear this, so. Oh, that's not it. Okay, so it is five hours and it's a hundred and forty selected response questions, so you select a response. But some of them are gonna be like one answer is the most appropriate. And when they say that, that should be like raised little hairs on the back of your neck. Because it's like a red flag, most appropriate means you might have given me more than one appropriate response. One is more appropriate based on the specifics of what they said, right, their diction, their word. So their grade level, because we do different things with seventh graders than we would do with high schoolers, right? Um, and and they try to get you on on um, wording. So please be mindful of your reading and remember that above all, this is a critical reading test and um. So here are the, here are the standards that we just looked at that that. Okay, excellent, and so here you have the um, the, and it shows you the standards. I like this because it shows you the different chunks, so you can know just how much something is weighted. So here in in domain one, which is the scientific inquiry and processes, it it is, it covers standards one through three. And then five, no, six and seven, and then nine. So all of those are worth ten percent in there. Okay, twenty percent comes from physics, that's a lot. Twenty percent comes from chemistry and again, this is, this is the physical science portion, that's like, I. Forget which one it was that we were looking, we were just looking at it right now, the physical science one, but those ones, that's already forty percent of your entirety of the exam. So it behooves you to super de duper understand the ins and outs of the standard. Um, what was it, was standard eight? So standard. Eight here. Which we were looking at before. Um, it's, it's about physical science, but it covers many of the the classes, right? So it's about chemistry and physics and um, biology to some extent, so let's go back and take a look. So then we also have um, cell structure and processes, this is another big section. So we have eight percent, eight percent, eight percent, six percent, right? So that is what twenty or thirty percent, so right there, that's seventy percent in just two standards, the bulk of the exam. So that's where you need to focus a a big, big chunk of your, your studying before beefing up on your knowledge, on everything physics. Everything chemistry, everything uh, biology, which includes, you know, anatomy and physiology kind of. Um, and and you don't have to like be shooting in the dark, you have the teaks, go very specifically. You don't need to know things that your students don't need to know, whatever they need to know and need to be able to do. That's what you need to know and be able to do with them and and sort of show and make happen for them. So teaks are very, very important and understanding these two uh, standards. Um, standards eight and standards nine, very important because they make up seventy percent. And then if you just add in one more standard, standard ten, you get another, what's this fifteen? That's already what eighty-five percent is in just three standards. So beef up on those, those three for sure, for sure, those are the ones that you need to, um, and that's standard eight, standard nine and standard ten. Of this document. Let me see, so here's the physics section, you see that there. Which one was this one, this one was physical science, here you have physics. And and the specifics, the specifics that we need to be able to do and then it even gets more specific when we take a look at their teaks, right? And the things that they need to be able to do. See here, like I know I've done it before, I took physics AP in high school. But like that was the last time I had any sort of like a real focused instruction slash practice. And I would have to look up free body diagrams again, I mean, I'm sure once I do, be like, okay, yes, I get it. And I'll be able to create and analyze them, but if I were taking this exam, it would be certainly on the top of my to do list. So go through these and ones that you couldn't sort of like just instruct someone or have a conversation or explain to like your best friend or your mom. Like this is what a free body diagram is and what I would do to create it with the kids. If you can sort of articulate it, then you know it, you know it enough. And you are the best guide as to whether you're ready or not, you know, you are the best assessment of your preparedness. Um, let me try, oh, so here's chemistry. Solve problems involving moles, there will be a mole question on there, you know? Everybody talks about the mole business um, and the, and how they're like, I remember doing moles in high school and then I saw it on the exam and I'm like. You had to have known they were gonna ask you about moles, um, you know, on that, on the twenty percent that is chemistry. So make sure that you, you know, you don't need to be a chemist to go in and take this exam, but you do need to have a really good, solid working knowledge of those overarching concepts. That you would have to instruct on in a basic knowledge of the math, you know, like finding uh, moles, you know, like um, what is it? Balancing equations and whatnot, so um. Those skills, which again, they're going to be listed for you in the teak, so you don't have to like search for them. And uh, mometrix does have some examples in there as well. And how, how good is two forty tutoring as far as the math is concerned, that it's associated with science?
Um, I just started on, I can't remember which one it is, first physics or chemistry. Um, it's going pretty well, I think it it does like. So like at the beginning, one of the questions, I think it was still on like data, um, it involved like um. Avocado's number and like converting from like basic, you know, like English trick or whatever. It's pretty good at like these, like giving examples and being like, this is how you are supposed to do it and stuff.
Okay, good, I'm glad, I'm really glad, make sure that again, you super. If you have to spend extra attention on any, do the physics, the chemistry and those like the sign, the cell, like biology type physical sciences. Um, super focused on those ones because it's eighty-five percent of the exam, which is like. I'm just sort of freaking out and I, I know that I've known that before, but like every time I hear it, it's sort of crazy because it's only three standards and it count, it accounts for so, so much. Um, the other standards, this is life science, oh, so this is um, nine. With life science and then you also have. Ten. Right?
Yeah, biology.
It was eight, nine and ten. Ten is earth and space science, so this one is uh. Life science is what we would know as biology. And then you have earth and space science. So I would also brushing up on this, I mean, it doesn't account for so much of your exam. Let's see. Yeah, I mean, it it does a little bit fifteen percent, so those. One, two, three, yeah, it is three, okay. Um. So you have life science and physical science here. And then above you have scientific inquiry and processes. One second, one second. Sorry, my son is being loud, like, why can I hear you? Um, so components and properties of the solar system, we already talked about that. So scientific inquiry and process, oh, here. Um, this last one, domain ten is over um, standards four and five. And it's not gonna be like so much of the exam, but it's gonna be a small portion of it and that's just instruction and science learning and um, you know. Creating the safety rules necessary and appropriate for all science environments. So like if you're doing a class and you're doing an experiment, there would be safety procedures and safety rules for that. But if you were gonna go out in the field and let's say there's a creek behind the school and you're gonna go, I don't know, pick up samples. Then then you would, it would behoove you to have a discussion about like rules and safety procedures in that environment while you guys are collecting specimens. So um, making sure that you are constantly checking for understanding for your students and that you understand that assessment and instruction are cyclical, that's a cycle. And we don't assess to, you know, give out grades or make some kids superior, like a hierarchy of awesomeness in science. We, we assess, we give formative assessments, summative assessments to better understand where the students are. It is a a collection of data and so sometimes that data is in the form of our observations and other times it's a, it's a quiz, you know, or a lab report. Um, but but it's all in a way of gathering data in order to check our students' progress towards mastering the objectives that we set for them. In order to check our students' progress towards mastering the objectives that we set for them. And also for finding ways to better support them, right, to see areas of weakness and how we can better support them, so. We use assessment to identify their pro- progress, help um, them master objectives. And to better um, to help us better design a plan for them, like to move to gauge or. Or to um, adjust our instruction for their particular needs, and so. We give myriad multiple all the time assessments, walking around, the conversations that I have, my exit tickets, my reviewing of their journals, all of it. Is a collection of data so that I can better um, plan my instructions to their particular needs. To where they particularly are, to who they particularly are and and to uh, their needs. So that that's it for domain ten. And here's the breakdown, you see like. This chunk right here is pretty big. Wait, is it this way that's big? Yeah, it's eight, but it breaks it up here to try to trick you, eight, 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 it was like in different colors, but it's, you know, essentially the same. The same standard being uh, assessed. So here are the competencies, and these are the the meshing of the standards together, so if you'll look at um. Domain one, domain one is compiled, composed of standards one through three, the ones that we just discussed. Uh, again, so so these here, the standard that's worth five percent, it's also in here as well, it's also in this top section. Which is important, and so uh, so is standard eleven. I don't even remember what that is, but also standard eleven, don't forget that one, those are all in there, that means that the competencies are gonna be a re. Configuring of all of those standards together, so I, after you, you know, look at the standards for sure, go back and take a look at what particulars in here. Just make sure that you're comfortable with all of the concepts that are outlined um, in the competencies. The competencies again are just the standards restated and formatted, so that they fit into the domains. Competency three, the teacher understands how the history of science, how science impacts, wait. Understands the history of science, how science impacts the daily lives of students, how science interacts with and influences. Personal and societal decisions, so we have to understand that, and then we have to find ways to get the students to understand those ex- those same ideas. Um, through the types of um, things that we we cover, understanding. The role of helping to solve personal, societal and global issues, and this is such a like a really good. Our kids are really good about this, like I think they better, they're better than we were, when we didn't weren't taught, like people didn't talk to us about how the planet was dying, we would have been very alarmed. If I had been in high school, at my, I went to a magnet school for medical students, so we all would have been very. We we knew that there were some things going on, but like in the nineties, it wasn't really big on our like to do list, any of that. But my daughter like can't sleep at night, she's a senior, but she's all like, you know, for, she's very, very conscious about all of my. My children are even down to, but but we talk about it so much more, and it's so much more a part of our lives, and it's important that it is. Because we do have a personal responsibility to not add to the like the growing problems that we have. Um, and that, you know, we're now seeing sort of like the. Consequences of, so um, go through these, um, look through them, do like a close reading of them as you would. Annotating, um, writing notes wherever you need to fill in the gaps. Or just even writing, oh, I know what this is, I'm gonna rewrite it in my own words right here, it's a really good um, review tool for you.
For the. Portion where I have to do, um, I don't know if you can advise me on this, um, I already have like a teacher that I can shadow. Does it have to be a science teacher? No, it can be like, yeah, cuz I.
No, that's too specific and difficult, you know what I mean, to get to make that. It's not even possible, once you are there as an intern on the job, for us always to get you a mentor that is your. You know what I mean, somebody that doesn't happen, and your mentor's in a different content area, just because you're the only Spanish teacher on the on the campus, and there is nobody, you know what I mean, so you're. So no, certainly not, if any, if any teacher of record, you can observe, but do those fast, because those are the ones that miss. I like, I can help you with with uh, getting coursework done and sort of like delaying that, but things that we can't delay are those field based experience.
Yeah, so I can, I can start as early as probably next week doing the. Coursework, just because um. I have spoken with a teacher and she has spoken with her principal, and the principal has said like. As long as I have the, you know, correct paperwork and stuff like that, I I could, I should be able to do it.
Excellent.
What else? I was gonna ask you a lot of bunch of questions and I completely forgot, uh, so that one was done, the test. Yeah, I'm just really nervous about the test because. This is my first time like attempting it, and I want to do so well, but. I know I'm gonna need like a second try at least, cuz I'm gonna just get to the test and be like, I forgot everything.
Go in there with a game plan, go in there and like do a little meditative thing, visualize yourself, kicking butt and taking names. Because it's like, it's like one of those getting inside the ring business, if you think you're gonna lose the fight, like it's already lost, you know? Don't think you're gonna lose the fight, you're gonna watch some, brush up on like physics and chemistry beforehand, and then and use those. Self tutoring sessions like as bolstering for your confidence, because the best um. Like remedy for anxiety is careful preparation, you know, like you'll be less anxious if you're like, man, I'm gonna smash this. Molecular nonsense, you know, go in there and be, but seriously, go in there um. Knowing that you have put in the the requisite amount of effort and that that you're gonna be successful, and also be mindful. Of of the questions, if you are, you know, super still, do you know what day you're taking it?
I am gonna schedule it today, I wanted to talk to you about the exam and stuff before I scheduled, just cuz I'm a little nervous about it. So what? I know you said that like we are the best gauge of like when we should take it and like how prepared we are. What like, how, what timeframe should I, you know, have stuff done, that's what I wanted to know. Cuz like I already have the Pearson account, I already have the other TA account, um, and I know I was sent. Uh, I think, I don't know if it was yourself or another, someone else who sent me an email regarding like another. Set of videos or stuff that I have to get done.
I sent you, um, I sent you just the the science ones. The science, seven through twelve.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so I've already watched all of those.
Yeah, so I just sent you this, I'm not sure what.
It wasn't videos, it was like through, um, I don't know what it is, what it's called, and I don't know how to leave or like not do this. I don't know how to work my.
Zoom?
Zoom, I don't, I don't wanna click leave and then like leave here.
Yeah, it might, it might leave the whole, the whole thing.
I'm scared.
I think that the the, the wisest thing for you to do is to continue with two forty tutoring. Uh, I would schedule the exam for like three weeks. Yeah, and give yourself like, cuz remember, we we came up with three, I'm just gonna let them and have them wait. Um, we identified three standards that make up eighty-five percent. Like I would say, I'm gonna bang three, like one a week, like deeply. Do one standard, like everything physics, the next one, everything chemistry, the next one, blah, blah, blah. And then uh, we can, we can get together and go over some practice, some practice questions that. They have here, wait, where is it? Let me look for it. Hi, Marcos, I'm sorry, we're still working on science seven through twelve, so if you'll give me a moment and then we'll, we'll get started. Look, there's a practice exam for ten dollars, and it's given, it's given by Pearson. I didn't, they just came up with this, because before they only had one for PPR, this is excellent news, this will give you the, a better assessment even. Of your own assessment, of what you need to focus on, and and so it's ten bucks, I'm gonna send this to you right now. So do that, and then send me your scores and and what. Where you're at.
Yeah, okay, so then like about like three to four weeks should be like the timeframe to take, okay?
Yeah, do it four weeks, give yourself four weeks, do, and then study one major section that you need to like bang out. A week and uh, just touch base with me, and then at week four, we'll get together, look at some questions. If you don't feel prepared for it, you can push it back, there's no, there's nothing wrong pushing it back, yeah, we just wanna know that you are actively working towards that goal.
Yeah, okay. Um, I really, I'll probably end up emailing you. Um, in regards to that other, the like other stuff that I'm supposed to do, cuz I really don't know.
Okay.
Then I did have a question, is um, I don't know if you're allowed to tell me or not, um, just because I work better in group settings. Um, if there is like. Other people challenging the seven through twelve.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I could, I can uh, look up the list. Later today and try to send a group email and maybe. Yeah, absolutely, there are other people who are studying for this very exam right now.
Yeah, that would be good, cuz I also like. My aunt. Uh, did hers through teacher builder as well, like fifteen years ago, when she was starting, so she's the one who recommended the program to me. And she let me know, she's like, yeah, ask your, ask them if they have like study groups.
Absolutely, yeah, I will totally uh, get the list together for you, that way we can, you know, have a. A a cohort of people to help you guys with, and maybe you guys can do deep dives on, like you got, you do standard day, I'll do this one, we'll trade notes, you know? Like that would even be a better situation um, for you guys. All right, thank you so much, Ms. Perez. Absolutely, it was a pleasure, and um, let me know if you have any more questions, you know, regarding that those of like when you figure out what that other stuff was.
Um, I, you have uh, office hours Tuesdays and Thursdays, correct?
That's correct, from nine to eleven, so like the other person that did science seven through twelve, like he met with me once, he used his one like free. Session, and then every office hours for like two weeks, he came in and we just like did deep dives, you know what I mean, and he knocked it out, like he he did well.
I'm probably gonna do the same thing.
Okay, all right, well, then I will see you there.
Have a nice day.
You too, bye bye.